This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Review, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2019, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 3rd, 2019, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphones. And assistive listening devices are available. Mr. Przyansky, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Burrell-Mittler.
Here.
Councilwoman Fine. Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilwoman Hale.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz. Borough Attorney.
Here.
Borough Administrator.
Here.
Okay, before we go into council reports, I'm delighted to see so many of our first responders here tonight. And I want to, on behalf of the council and everyone in Highland Park, thank you for your heroic efforts on the night of Christmas Eve, December 24th, 2018, when there was a significant fire on Cedar Avenue in Highland Park, on Cedar Lane in Highland Park. And I want to read a proclamation which each of you will be receiving from us. Whereas on December 24th, 2018, at 4:13 PM, Highland Park received a report of an apartment on fire on Cedar Lane. And whereas members of the Highland Park Police Department, the Highland Park Fire Department, Highland Park First Aid Squad, Highland Park Office of Emergency Management, and members of the Civilian Emergency Response Team, along with mutual aid agencies from the surrounding area, responded to Cedar Lane. And whereas upon the arrival in the area, it was discovered that 82 Cedar Lane Apartment D was fully involved in a structure fire. And whereas members of all departments working together were able to safely evacuate residents of the affected building. And whereas due to the quick professional actions of all involved, the fire was contained in four apartments. And whereas the fire was extinguished without any injuries or loss of life. Now therefore I, Gail Burrell-Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby issue the special commendation to the following. Lieutenant Gary Panachella, Patrolman Kevin Schiffner, Sergeant Jason Culver, Patrolman Mohab Hanut, Chief Jay Littman, Captain Michael Gershon, F.F. Matt Flowers, firefighter Joe Romano, firefighter Chris Diabro, firefighter Lester Rosenhaus, First Assistant Chief Tony Zimareta, Lieutenant Bill Bright, firefighter Miguel Rondon, professional firefighter PFF?
Probationary.
Probationary firefighter Mario Diaz Senior, firefighter Larry Teal, Second Assistant Chief Margaret Brooks, firefighter Andrew Schwartz, firefighter Tyler Morris, probational firefighter Eric Torres Olivos, firefighter Jeff Morris, David Lowenstein, Samuel Lee, Jonah Rosen, Nacy Tuzukuchio, sorry if I messed that up, Sarah Lowenstein, Ellie Goodman, Steve Cudia, Robin Lowenstein, Bruce Nadler, Jonathan Tate, OEM Coordinator James Polos, Rodolfo Giuliani, Anne Sheryl White, Brian Duches, Alyssa Kaplan, Pamela Plastok, Patrolman George Reich of Rutgers University Police Department, Edison Fire Department, North Stilton Fire Department, Donellen Fire Department, New Brunswick Fire Department, River Road Fire Department, Middlesex Fire Department, East Brunswick Fire Department, East Franklin Fire Department, and Kendall Park Fire Department. Thank you all for everything you did for our residents and our town. Each person I mention gets her own proclamation. If I mentioned your name, could you please stand? Are you standing? Are we invited for your picture? If not, have come and then he won't. Jay will help me out with who's here for his.
She's still in her apartment, and they need to leave because I guess she's on patrol or something.
Phil said I'm not walking down the stairs.
Yeah, I'll figure out if he didn't get him. She's taking pictures of all its apartments.
Hey, Phil, we don't. What? Getting a picture?
Maybe use Jeddah. I just wait till the pictures. It's really good.
One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you so much.
That way, to the left. You send the doorway.
Make sure I'm not doing anything you do.
I don't like to be in the picture. People might run towards it.
Page yourself.
We're cert. No, but I know the Brooklyn officers. No, cert in a minute. Brooklyn officers.
So keep moving.
Terry says she's cert. Oh, I thought she was going in and out of there. She just asked, Terry, you're cert.
See, we hide back here. We're like...
Do you need a cert member outside?
I know. That's why I'm...
She's moving Yang. Trying not to fall.
I know. This is hilarious. I didn't have a chance to do mine, so I'm just gonna talk about the windows and windows. Like off with my head.
Alrighty, we're going to go into our council reports at this point, and I'm going to start on my left with Councilwoman Foster-Dublin, our photographer for the night.
You may close the door.
Yeah, one second. Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you for all our first responders. As you see, many of them were here in the room tonight that we gave the commendations to, and we can't say thank you enough for all 20 families that were affected, that they were there to serve, and no one was hurt, and everyone got placed, and we continue to work with the families in various areas and from the surrounding communities that was here to help us. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So First Aid Squad, OEM, Police Department, Fire Department, many, many thanks. Moving forward, I just want to do a quick report on the police blotter for December 1st to December 31, and it just records that in town during the month of December, we had 1,224 incidences, which was 74 ambulance call. We had one, three assaults, one burglary, one, two motor vehicle burglary, and I can't say it enough that please lock your car doors when you leave your cars. Do not leave valuables in your cars. We had one CDS, two criminal mischief complaint, three misorderly persons, 21 disputes, 15 harassments. Missing persons were two, motor vehicle accidents 41, NORCAN deployment was one, three cases of shoplifting, nine cases of theft, one trespassing, and 18 adult welfare checks. And total nine arrests for the month, and four persons that were out on, that warrants were issued for. Please continue to keep yourselves safe, keep everyone safe. As the weather gets colder, we have opened up our warming centers, so anyone is in need of any kind of services, please call the Police Department, and they will reach out to us, and we will tell you where to go in the hours of warming centers here in town. We are here to assist, and please, it's not a big deal to just call the Highland Park Police Department, which is 732-572-3800, and just tell them that you need a warm place if the case arise, and someone will be there. We'll make sure that you have a warm, safe place to go to during this time. Pretty much that's my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, would you please give us your report?
Yes, Mayor, I only have an announcement, and I would also like to thank the first responders too, as I do live across the street there from the fire, and we did lose power for some time, and I really do appreciate the fast response and how the community has really helped my, like the neighbors really in town, and have really came together, so thank you.
I do just want to remind, I've been talking about this for quite some time last year and also this year, the Windows of Understanding project that is kicking off Monday for Martin Luther King Day, and that will go on until February 28th, the end of Black History Month. The project is a joint project with New Brunswick Arts Council, the Mason Gross School of Arts, and our own Highland Park Arts Commission. This is the second year that we're participating in the Windows of Understanding, which is artists seeing through hate and taking on social justice issues, and really their art is really speaking how they view hate. And so we're going to have, it's nearly, it has doubled this year from last year. We have nearly 40 storefronts, and most in Highland Park is along Raritan Avenue. It is a family-friendly, at-your-own-pace art guide, and really help us, this is the way that we thought would be best to pay homage to Martin Luther King and to keep his dream alive. So I do encourage you during that time to really take the tour. And the mayor will speak a little bit about the Tables of Understanding that she wanted to do in February as well, and I'm gonna let her speak on that. And that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hale.
Thank you very much, Mayor, of a couple things tonight. The first is a message and a reminder that the Highland Park Community Food Pantry is open to anyone who lives or works in Highland Park. And I'm mentioning this very specifically tonight because I want anyone who's a federal worker or contractor who is affected by this government shutdown and in need to know that the food pantry is open to them. And since I also realize that most likely federal workers and federal contractors who are being hurt by this shutdown don't know the procedures, I just thought that I might go over them quickly. The Highland Park Community Food Pantry is located in the Community Center at 220 South Sixth Avenue. The normal hours of operation for the food pantry are the second and fourth Thursday of the month from 9:00 to 10:45 in the morning, and 6:00 to 7:00 PM. And then the Saturday following those Thursdays from 9:30 to 10:30 in the morning. And generally, we ask people to pick a single Thursday or Saturday within that particular week. So that means that the next normal operations are going to be Thursday, January 24th, Saturday, January 26th, and then again on February 14th and Saturday, February 16th. A full schedule of this is available on the website. In addition, if the need arises prior to the regular scheduled food distributions, it is possible to set an appointment by calling Nicole Huff at 732-819-0047, and calling her to just say that there's a distinct need, and setting up an appointment. It's not totally necessary to have an appointment, it just makes things run a little bit smoother when you come in. So I just wanted to make sure that all of, any federal workers that we have in Highland Park are aware of this. There's also another important announcement of how the federal shutdown is affecting Highland Park. Residents who are on the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, or SNAP program, because of the shutdown, SNAP recipients are going to be actually receiving their benefits early. So if you have received your SNAP benefits at the beginning of January, and we're expecting not to receive them again until February, the second distribution, or the February distribution, is actually going to take place January 17th. So that is the entirety of the benefits that will be coming for February, that will be coming on January 17th. I think it's important to get the word out to that so that people are not expecting a distribution on the 17th, and then another one in February. There won't be another distribution until March, and that's all directly related to the shutdown. So I think those are two instances where the federal shutdown has potential to have some real and direct impacts on our residents. There may be more as this goes on, but I do think it's important that as a borough, we do all we can to help any of the federal workers who are affected by this. The second thing that I wanted to mention is that we will be having the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Humanitarian Award Program. That's going to take place on Monday, January 21st, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, at the Highland Park High School at 102 North Fifth Avenue. This year, the honoree will be Tyrone Harrison, a beloved local educator, former Highland Park and Ohio State football player who was tragically killed at the end of last year. He'll be receiving the award. And in addition, there will be a keynote speaker from Mary Tullock, who is well-known in the community and a local student journalist. This is always an uplifting and inspiring program to attend, and so I would encourage everybody to attend that event. The last thing that I wanted to mention is another special public meeting that is coming up. This will be on February 6th at 7:30 at the Community Center. As many of you know, our current Police Chief, Steve Rizigo, is going to be retiring in April. The process for finding Chief Rizico's replacement is underway, and a significant part of that is going to be this meeting on February 6th at 7:30 at the Community Center. The meeting is sponsored and will be run by the Highland Park Equity Commission, HP Equity, which is really the new name for the Highland Park Bias-Free Committee, Commission which we just started. The primary goal of this meeting is to identify community questions for the candidates for chief. We're going to begin with an explanation and an overview of the process, both the legal and labor union regulations that the borough is following in this. But the bulk of the meeting is going to be, will consist of participants at the meeting breaking into focus groups around broad topic areas, with each focus group charged with coming up with questions that they would like to ask the candidates, and pose to the chief and to the captain. Each of the focus groups will then report to the larger group, and all of the information will be collected, organized, prioritized, and collated by the HP Equity Commission, who will then come up with sort of a final list of questions. My hope is that this is a model for organizing public meetings, for having interactive public discussion on important issues, but that's only going to work if people show up. It's only going to work if they come out and participate and do the honest work throughout this process. So I would encourage everyone to spread the word far and wide about what I think is a very important meeting for Highland Park. The borough, the HP Equity Commission, will be getting everything out, widely publicizing it through our social media channels, but as always, we can use all the help we can get. So please tell everybody, again, that's Wednesday, February 6th at 7:30 at the Highland Park Community Center. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Matt. And please forward my great appreciation to the food pantry for opening up their doors and thoughts to the federal workers that are going through this terrible period.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Council President, do you have a report?
Just a brief report, some nuts and bolts from Public Works. First of all, everybody should have gotten their door hangers for the recycling and bulk trash and garbage disposal for the year. DPW distributed and put them on everybody's door. If you didn't get one because it blew away, or it's a multifamily house and you have the door inside, let us know. There are plenty here, you can pick them up in the borough. We'll be circulating them around. This is the schedule. You used to get the magnets, and then one year we didn't have anything, I think, so this has the schedule for bulk trash, recycling, and garbage pickup for North Side, South Side, and Triangle, and Business District. Just briefly, we're having, the borough along with some administration, will be having a working session on Thursday, taking the deer problem one step beyond just public comment at the meetings. Our borough administrator was lucky enough to get some representatives from the state fishing games to meet with some of our borough officials, and the plan there would be to then set up a public meeting based upon what they tell us, but we're moving to the next step in actually getting information. With regard to the ongoing water and sewer problems, we've been working on a regular basis at DPW, having meetings discussing how we can go about implementing the plans that our meetings, our monthly meetings with Middlesex Water are recommending. Our last meeting, we were actually quite literally down in the sewers. We were exploring the manholes, and what we're doing now in cooperation with HPTV was setting up a program to circulate pictures of what is actually going on 15 and 20 feet under the roads, so that when we start talking about projects to stop infiltration for, that we're paying extra money for sewage disposal or water leakage, we're actually having pictures. We already have an archive of several pictures of some camera runs-through of our water mains, and we'll be continuing that project into the spring, and we'll actually hopefully be putting it on HPTV. It sounds like a yucky project, and having been there, it is. It's a little weird, but if you haven't had an opportunity to look down a sewer in our town, they're actually 15 to 20 feet deep. They look like giant, the inside of a giant beehive or kiln made out of brick, and they're so old that all the metal fittings are gone. The specific problem is you can see the water that's flowing through it is leakage from groundwater, leaking water mains, and we have to pay for that. So we're actually taking, we're taking steps in doing that, and DPW has been gathering, rather than just looking at commercial sources, they actually have an archive now of Facebook pictures that other DPWs have been posting all over the nation about the process of their repairs, and they're showing there are a number of creative new ways of sealing this without digging roads up and putting in new infrastructure such as epoxy sealing and such. We're gathering that all together so that we can make intelligent decisions with limited capital and without raising any rates. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
One item, and actually I should mention, it was Councilwoman Wolkowitz requested that I make sure that I covered this since she couldn't be here tonight. Just to let everyone know, we're moving toward, there is a property owner on Cleveland Avenue who has proposed a school as a possible use for the property. And as part of exploring how that might or might not work for that area, we're working on some community outreach in advance of any formal application. And the first meeting is coming up is going to be for businesses and property owners immediately on Cleveland. We'll be looking at the existing zoning. There has been a lot of transition, as everybody who's familiar with Cleveland knows, in that area. So we're going to have kind of a small working meeting, and then on the 31st of January, we'll have an open-to-the-public meeting with community, whoever's interested, and particularly those who may be adjacent to that area, to come out, hear what's being proposed, but also think about what the future of Cleveland Lab might look like. And that'll all be facilitated by the Borough Planner. So the meeting's on the 31st at 7:00 PM. I'm still firming up the location, so I apologize, I can't announce that at this time, but you'll see more about that on our usual outlets in the coming week. So I just wanted to be sure I mentioned that tonight.
Thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
So I just want to let everyone know that that open public meeting that Councilwoman Hale was talking about, where people can give input to us on the kinds of questions they want us to ask of any prospective candidate for chief. There are flyers for that event on the table up front. Please feel free to take some flyers and distribute them as well. Also, later in this meeting soon to come, I will be appointing over 100 new and returning volunteers to our different boards and commissions. And we, you know, we say it all the time, we take it for granted when we say it, but Highland Park is really a community that comes together to work for the better... we'll have an open-to-the-public meeting with community, whoever's interested, and particularly those who may be adjacent to that area, to come out, hear what's being proposed, but also think about what the future of Cleveland lab might look like. And that'll all be facilitated by the Borough Planner. So the meeting's on the 31st at 7:00 p.m. I'm still firming up the location, so I apologize, I can't announce that at this time, but you'll see more about that on our usual outlets in the coming week. So I just wanted to be sure I mentioned that tonight.
Thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
So I just want to let everyone know that that open public meeting that Councilwoman Hale was talking about, where people can give input to us on the kinds of questions they want us to ask of any prospective candidate for chief. There are flyers for that event on the table up front. Please feel free to take some flyers and distribute them as well. Also, later in this meeting, soon to come, I will be appointing over 100 new and returning volunteers to our different boards and commissions. And we, you know, we say it all the time, we take it for granted when we say it, but Highland Park is really a community that comes together to work for the betterment of all of us. And it takes a village, people say, but it really does take a borough. And I appreciate all of the volunteers who put theirselves out there, who want to help us work towards a better Highland Park. And I just want to let you all know that over 100 of your friends and neighbors will be appointed tonight. Lastly, Highland Park lost a wonderful one of those volunteers last week. Mark Mappin was the Chair of the Highland Park Library Board for many years. I first met Mark when he and I used to commute together on New Jersey Transit heading north. And I used to look forward to our meeting up on the train for some of, to hear some of what he was working on. He was a historian, particularly interested in New Jersey history, and he had a wonderful sense of humor. I'd like to take a moment now for all of us to remember Mark Mappin and what he did for not only Highland Park, but all of New Jersey. Please take a moment to remember him. Thank you. And at this point, I'm going to open up the floor for public comment. If anybody has something they want to say, please step up to the microphone. I will remind everyone that this portion of public comment is limited to 15 minutes and three minutes a person, so it'll be five of you. We do have a second public comment section.
Hi, my name is Tina Weisshouse. I live at 143 North Fifth Avenue. I'm the Chairperson of Sustainable Highland Park, and I'm here to really say thank you to the council. Tonight, it is my understanding that there will be a first reading of the plastic bag ordinance, which we call Bring Your Own Bag Ordinance. Two years ago, Terri Hovere wrote the grant and then became the Borough Administrator, and I became the Chairperson. And we worked hard to do a tremendous amount of outreach in the community. We did surveys, we gave away bags, we showed movies, we talked to people, and we had a sense that the community was really behind us. When it came time to write the ordinance, we then held more community meetings. We held meetings with the downtown business community, and we held two meetings with the community at large. And although there were problems, we tried to be responsive. People raised objections, we tried to be responsive. I think we really did change things in response to what people had problems with. I think it was an excellent process of outreach and transparency. The ordinance has been and is presently, the current version, is on the Borough Council website. And so I'm here to say, it's been a very good process. I'm very happy that we're at this point. I want to thank Phil for being our liaison and working with me closely on the ordinance. I want to thank Terri for writing the grant and working with me closely on the ordinance. And I want to thank Gail for being very, very supportive all the way. And I think that this ordinance, if people take the time to read it, and they will be enacting it within the next year, you will find that it is a best practices ordinance. It is what the state bill looks like. We had, you know, the task of aligning it to the state bill, which may or may not get passed in its present form or passed at all, but we wanted to move ahead with it. We felt that this is something that Highland Park can be proud of, and that will put us really in the forefront of communities around the state because it is a best practice ordinance. So please, everybody, take the time to go on the website and read it, and there will be a second reading at the next council, or it's on here. And at that point, there'll be public discussion. But I want to thank everybody for this process.
And Tina, I'd like to thank you for your stick-to-it-iveness and your commitment to making this happen in the best way possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Josh Przansky. I live at 141 North 10th Avenue here in Highland Park. Three years ago tomorrow, a young boy was killed holding onto his mother's hand at the corner of Columbia and Raritan Avenue. In those three years, we've had numerous conversations about how we can make that stretch of road, which is at the entrance of our town, on the north side of the town, a more safer area for people, for pedestrians especially, who have very narrow sidewalks there. It's a very highly trafficked area. Cars are zooming by, people are crossing. There's a school there, there's a very heavily-used grocery store, kosher grocery store, there are mechanics, lots of shops there, and it's become very dangerous. I know we, the state installed a crosswalk at one of the corners. Unfortunately, very few cars stopped at that crosswalk just last week. My wife saw a young boy, not part of the congregation, not part of the school, just a young boy in town, waiting at the crosswalk and waiting and waiting. She stopped her car, my wife, but she's a very good driver, and she stopped her car as she was waiting, because that's the law. But she noticed every other car in both directions was zooming right past, and that kid just decided, all right, I'm just not going to cross the street here. This is a situation I think is unique in our town. There's only one other stretch of road that I know of in Highland Park that has four lanes. That's on Cedar Lane and River Road, that area, which is not a very high-traffic, commercial area. And we have the speed limit because it's a borough road. I believe it's only 25 miles an hour versus the 35 to 40 that happens on Raritan Avenue and the beginning of town. Now, we've been lobbying the state for a long time to do the road diet, to shrink that road from four lanes to two lanes. And up until now, I haven't heard, until today I should say, I haven't heard whether or not this is going to happen. We've heard lots of promises, they're doing it, they're not doing it, they are doing it, they're going to try to do it, but we really haven't heard a definitive answer whether or not this is going to happen, because it needs to happen, because it's become very untenable and very unsafe to walk in that area. So, Madam Mayor, I don't know if you want to share the conversation with us.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing this back to the forefront of our thinking, Josh. I did have a chance today to speak to Senator Deignan. It's very frustrating for all of us. He told me that he spoke with the people at the DOT, that they, just this week, it happens, they were talking about our Upper Aridin situation. What I would like to do is, if you recall in the very beginning, when the terrible tragedy occurred, we brought in the Commissioner from the DOT with some of our legislators. You were there, and I think the Rabbi from the synagogue there was, came, and maybe even somebody else from the congregation or the school. Why don't we set that up again here? I'm hoping to hear, as you said, you know, we've heard, yes, they approved it, and now it's delayed, and then we heard, you know, the change in administration, everybody from DOT was gone, and now all these new people are in. So why don't we just either go down there and meet with them again, or have them come back up here if I don't get the kind of response I want from Senator Deignan in the DOT this week?
Okay, I think it's, I appreciate that. I think it's important as well, now that the Chief of Staff to the Governor is, was the mayor of the adjoining town of Metuchen, who understands what we're going, I discussed it with Mr. Camerano a few years ago, before he was Chief of Staff, and it's, you know, the government now is all in the same party as our senators and our assembly, our senator assembly members and the council. I think there really needs to be a push now. I think this is the opportunity and the time to show that, you know, this is a serious issue. People who live there have been talking about taking some other action, not what I'll call civil disobedience, but whatever it is. Hopefully, it's not going to come to that, where they just want to get their point across to be taken seriously. So I'd like to go back to the community now and say, we met tonight at the council meeting, the mayor said, this is the road we're going to take, so to speak, no pun intended, and how we're going to proceed, and hopefully in the next few weeks, we have an answer for the community.
And if not, let you and I go down there.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
Tara Canavera, 361C, Crowes Road, Highland Park. I have two things to say. First is, on behalf of my family and other free and reduced lunch families, I'd like to thank the Police Department for the gifts that they gave our children. They were very much appreciated. The other thing I'd like to say is actually about the plastic bags. While in my heart I'm for it, but as a low-income family, I do have concerns. And every time I raise this, I'm told by people in town, oh, but they're only a dollar for the reusable bags. But I don't think people understand what it's like to be poor in this town. After paying my bills and the copay for my husband's medication that he has to take, we're left with $7 a week to feed a family of four. Thankfully, we have the food pantry, which helps a great deal. However, then certain things happen, like I hit a pothole in town, blew out a tire, had to get a new tire. That brought my budget for the month down to $4 a day. So paying for a dollar for a bag, where am I going to find that? So I just want you to know that we're all for it, the poor people. However, we would like to know if we could get help getting reusable bags.
So I'm going to ask Tina to, why don't you step up to the mic?
Tina, would you come to the microphone, please?
Two things, Tara. Two things. First of all, there's a low-income exemption for paying the fee on either, am I not being picked up? Yeah. Either on the plastic or the paper. So a low-income person will be exempted, and we have lots of bags to give you, just so that you'll have as many as you need. We've got 500 sitting in my garage right now. Okay? So I'll get them.
You know, if they can be owned directly, where else can they have the bags?
I'll bring them to Burr Hall, and we'll leave them at the.
We discussed how to get those out right before it goes live.
My name is Herb Gross. I live at Adelaide Gardens. Just recently, Highland Park, we lost a veteran, a lifelong resident of Highland Park, high school graduate of Highland Park, by the name of Lou Borberly. Lou served our country. He fought for this country. And let me say one thing, ladies and gentlemen, freedom is not free. You have to fight for it, and you have to earn it. And Lou Borberly did both. Would you please join me for one moment of silence for our late veteran Lou Borberly? Present arms.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to approve the emergency temporary appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho-Hun?
Yes.
And now to the plastic bag ordinance. Clerk, would you please report on introduction of plastic bag ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County, Bring Your Own Bag Ordinance, has been introduced and writing by the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Just a brief comment, I would echo Tina's comments. We also use this for a different purpose. This was one of the first times we actually had a more coordinated presentation, development of an ordinance that had not only some notoriety and some visibility because of the state, New York State is now introducing a very similar ordinance announced today, but we developed it through the community. We did a lot more airing of the versions. Even before they were considered, we had them out to the public, and I would thank Sustainable Highland Park and the volunteers that worked so hard on that. I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho-Hun?
Yes, and I just have a brief comment also. Thank you, Phil and Sustainable, for also working on this project. I also actually learned through the public meetings, certain things, when you talked about the food chain, and I didn't think about that at that time. And recently, it was an article that the Huffington Post had put out, that a dead well had came up shore in Indonesia, where I actually was when I read the article, that had like 13 pounds of plastic waste in his stomach, including like flip-flops and plastic cups. It was just a lot of things. So as we think we're a small town, it's really not going to make an impact, and I feel I'm making an impact, so thank you and yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the following items on the consent agenda, numbers 12 through 37?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho-Hun?
Yes.
And now for those wonderful volunteers I was talking about. I am appointing the following to the Arts Commission, Allison Baldwin and Maggie Dominic. To the.
It's still bias-free to you many ordinance.
Okay. The soon-to-be-name-changed Bias-Free Commission, Justin Burton, Sheila Sikar, Julie Luck, Lucinda Holt, Sonya Hedlam, Matthew Hirsch, and Reverend Kermit Moss. To the Board of Health, Ken Sacks and Cassie Kingsbury. To the CDBG Advisory Committee, Josh Fine, Ed Prince, Sheila Highsmith, Cheryl Magaziner, and Deborah Morgan. To the Commission for Universal Access, Debbie Hire, Mickella May as alternate one. Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, John Adler, Tracy Sangiano, Leticia Almeida, Jordan Steiner, Nasrin Rafiq, and Laurent Reyes. To the Community Emergency Response Team, Joanna Joseph, Alyssa Kaplan, Pamela Plastok, Brian Duché, Roberto Munoz, Shari Larson, Paul Scharf, Susan Winter, David Larson, Bruce Nadler, Ann Sheryl White, Nancy Wolf, and Rodolfo Giuliano. Community Food Pantry Committee, Janice Ballou, Monica Day, Andrea Greenberg Horowitz, Susan Powell, Laurel Kornfeld, Lynn Platt, Carly Andrews, Susan McKinnon, Deborah Convery, Bruce Bush, Evelyn Setahi, Nancy Lord, Sylvia Hove, Miriam Lefkowitz as an alternate, and Kathy Lombardi as an alternate. To the Council on Aging, Angela Perron, Paul Scharf, Lila Frost, Arlene Orlnick, A. Locke, Dee Donnelly as alternate number two. Orlnick, Ah Locke, Dee Donnelly as alternate number two. Crossing Guards, Catherine Chiochiari, Mary Ann Kinsey, Kibbie May, Lucille Morris, Charlene Rayside, Beverly Robinson, Michael Stizecki, Willis Ivan Thomas, Margaret Thomann, Deborah Riddick Smith. Digital Data Task Force, Joan Hollings, Hyam Cohen, Mike Schoffler, Jennifer Senek, Keith Peckman. Emergency Management Council, James Polos, Donald Newton, Thomas Hamel, Linda Hostof, Hostofa, Terry Hovair, Donald Risch, Scott Brescher, Nancy Wolf. Employee Safety Committee, Leanne Cosley Richardson, Stephen Risco, Donald Risch, Robert Cahill, Renee George, Jay Littman, Brian O'Mara, Kim McGraw. Historical Commission, Michelle Rechiapi, Anna Paray, Tom Glenn, Jeremy Gross, John Beatham, H.P. Gibbs-Hoot, Monica Jackson, Sylvia Hove, Michael Buckman, Joyce Orenstein, Eva Love, Evelyn Setehi, James Polos, Marilyn Prouse. Library Board of Trustees, Nora Krieger. Mayor's Wellness Campaign Committee, Dr. Cliff Lacy, David Segman, Justin Futterman, Patrolman Gaetano Palumbo, Donald Core, Michelle Cornblum, Dr. Mark Shiner. Municipal Alliance, Ashton Burrell as a private citizen, Irene Marks as a private citizen, Kim McGraw for local civic representative, Elizabeth Asamoah, the Highland Park Education Association representative, Wendy Yang, student member, Nan Farre, student assistant coordinator, Leanne Cosley Richardson, local civic leader, Lara Arp, religious representative, and Patrolman Jose Curbelo, police designee. Parking Review Task Force, Marcia Levinson, Jeff Ackerman, Paul Lanaris, Lieutenant Gary Panachella, Donald Risch, Scott Brescher, Mark Leibskind. Public Information Commission, Valerie Weidman, Beth Stevens, Hyam Cohen. Recreation Advisory Committee, Mickey Landis, Debbie, Debbie Hare, Kenneth Haskins, Kathy Pace, Jay Weinberg, Tara Canavera, Nick Cambitzis. Rehabilitation and Redevelopment Screening Committee, Wolfram Hofer, Judy Richmond, Robert Fector, Randall Solomon, Kim Hammond, Judy Shade Monk, Rebecca Hirsch, James Nichols. To the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, Carol Avilsgard, Eileen Coffey, Roseanne Calla, Karen Swain, Belinda Beatham, Mary Denver, Rosanna, Roseanne Baru, Mary Ann Allard, Christine Best, Joshua Best, Marion Sakrowitz, Paul Sawyers. Shade Service, I'm sorry, Shared Services Commission, Stephen Nolan, Donald Risch, Linda Hoffela, Jane Stanley, Darcy Simarusti, Stephen Risco, Donna Brightman, Dr. Mark Shiner, and Phyllis Goldstein. Sustainable Highland Park, Tina Weishouse, Alan Williams, Hagit Mano, Irene Reigner, Irene Chan Marks, Wendy Rosen, Nicole Wines, Julia Woodward, Sophia McDermott, and Paul Sawyers. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
May I congratulate you on reading that entire list. But I, I just want to say, the volunteers, quite honestly, are the lifeblood of, of the quality of life that we have. We can sit here, we put the budgets together, we talk about paving the roads, but it is the volunteers who give us the quality of life. Plastic bag ordinance, for instance, the Shade Tree Advisory Committee that watches over the canopy that generates oxygen in our town, the Meadows Trail people that watch our river for us. These volunteers, and the volunteers that work for the hoot and the food pantry, we're not the ones there at seven o'clock in the morning giving the food out. They are. I vote yes, absolutely.
Councilman Hale?
Yeah, I, I just want to let everybody, I wrote my dissertation on civic participation and how communities and neighborhood organizations were participating. And all I want to say is, the number of volunteers that we have, we're not normal. So, I would like to congratulate us on not being normal, because the number, amount of participation that we have in this community truly is astounding. So, I certainly vote yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kim Cho-Hun?
Yes.
Okay, I am appointing the following. To the Planning Board, Scott Brescher. To the Planning Board as Mayor's Designee, Pedric Millay. To the Library Board of Trustees as my alternate, Ronald Wong. Human Relations Commission, Reverend Kermit Moss, and Tammy Russ Fishbane. All right. We're about to go into our second public, no?
Number forty.
Ah. Clerk, would you please report on the election of the volunteer firefighters?
I received notification from the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department of the election of the following as volunteer firefighters: Levi Shapiro, Hunter Littman, Wesley Butler, and Brian Rus, Rusik.
May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Again, we can see an example, example of our fire department. We still need more volunteers. So, thank you for those who are volunteering. But if anyone else is interested, please, we're seeking more volunteers. So, come on down to our fire department. Definitely yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho-Hun?
All right. Now, we will open up for the second public comment session. Anyone who would like to say something, please step up to the microphone and state your name and
We speak our three or seven Magnolia. About your plastic bags, I hate plastic. So, I have my cloth bags, and I have pockets in my jackets to put things in. But I remember 50 years ago, or thereabout, I had children who lived in the Midwest, and they had to pay for the bags. That was just standard. If you needed a shopping bag, if you didn't bring your own, it cost you two or three cents. And that was money at that time. So, maybe that's a good way to consider it. Charge the people if they want to, don't want to bring their own bags. But really, what I want to talk about is the condition of the streets and the sidewalks. It is dangerous walking at Magnolia and Third Avenue. You can't, you can't cross the street safely there. And I'm terrified when I have to go down the street. So, please, and, and, and don't just pat your, throw something in, and then the next rainstorm or snowstorm is going to wash it out again.
So, so I was going to ask the Borough Administrator to comment on it. Do you want to say something too, Phil?
No, I just want to say, I was going to say that in Public Works, we, as you know, had contracted with a company that is now teaching us how to do interim repairs and maintenance, as opposed to that, I'll let the Borough Administrator fill you in. But we did look into that last year as a program for the whole town. And Terry's gotten some very good information from them just recently.
Well, and even more cutting-edge, and it's on the, the after-this-meeting, the conference agenda, I did have our engineer take a look at that crosswalk, because I went out there, and I would totally concur with your appraisal. And I got a, a cost proposal that I'm going to be presenting to council this evening later on, to see if we can include it in our, our work program for later this year.
Because they paved the road up until the thing some-
We think there's a way where we can maybe just treat the crosswalk area.
Yeah, now, of course.
And so, that's what I, I haven't had a chance to present it to council, but that's what we'll be discussing this evening.
If you're going to pave roads, pave the whole road, and don't stop just before the-
There was some utility work that was done in the crosswalk, which aggravated the conditions.
And the other thing that I would seriously like to recommend is to put some speed bumps on these, like, again, my, my Magnolia Street, Benner Street, the cars, if they don't see anything in front of them, they race through, and they don't even stop. They come to a rolling stop at the crosswalk.
So, that's one of the things that our traffic department can look into. I know there's been some discussion about the values or lack of value of speed bumps. But there are certainly traffic calming measures we can look into. And I'd ask the chief and lieutenant to see if our traffic people can look into what Mrs. Bicard is, is talking about.
Mayor?
Sorry, I didn't see you.
Councilwoman?
This has been, I know, ongoing concern for Mrs. Bicard and everyone else. And this year, one of my goals is to address the issue with rolling stops, because now everybody has bigger cars and higher cars, including myself with a SUV. And it's really hard to see around, and people tend to pull themselves out. So, we're going to be looking at the possibility of compact cars in those areas. So, they're smaller, and people can see around easier. So, that's one of the things that we're going to be looking at. How can we address the issue with rolling stops, people pulling out too far, and what kind of carbon devices can we put in place? So, that's going to be on the agenda for me this year.
And the last thing is, the leaves that aren't cleaned. My neighbors don't clean their leaves away. They blow into my house, into my yard. We had an ordinance at one time about cleaning up your property.
Yeah, we, we do, we still have that ordinance. But we should probably ask code enforcement to go out and see.
Leaves are tough, because they blow. And it's hard, you know, I, I sympathize, but it's a tough one to enforce, because by the time we get out there, they're on your yard. So, that's, that's one of those challenging things, but we'll work on it.
Good.
Does that have the same problem?
You'll be our inside woman.
My, my neighbor beyond it, because my, I clean my lawn, and then my neighbor come over. And not only that, because my lawn is clean, they also blow to the next one.
I have the same problem, unfortunately, because I'm down from, I'm down the hill, and I get everything from the person who doesn't clean from top to hill.
Hi, Josh Przyanski, 141 North Tenth Avenue, here in Highland Park. One other request that I have is, if you know where the, where the entranceway is to the driveway at the Congregation of Good Israel, on, I think it's Lexington, the first one was Lexington or Washington? Lexington, is Washington?
Washington.
Washington is the one closer to, right here, coming from this direction. First block is-
Lexington.
I think it's Washington, but I don't know. It's Washington.
It's Washington, okay, that block. Outside the driveway, there are sometimes cars parked over there. And when cars are parked over there, you can't see traffic coming from either direction when you're trying to pull out of the driveway. Is there any way to paint the yellow line for, I don't know, 20 feet or whatever is the usual amount of space necessary?
That's some of the, the, the overall look that we're going to be looking at, where the yellow line should be. Because over the years, they have somewhat-
Faded away.
Faded away. So, a part of the whole process this year with compact cars is looking at to see how our setbacks are, you know, and to get those lines in place. So, that's one of the, that's among one of the things I'll be working at with the road.
But I don't think that, that ever had one of that.
But we need to look at it and say, okay, if it's not there, and maybe it faded years ago, and it's a traffic issue. So, we need to put that in place.
On many streets in town, by the way. I, I drive a small car, so when I look right or left, if there's a SUV-
Right.
Not yours, but a van parked over there, I can't see traffic coming from either direction. So, yeah, it's-
Yeah, it is.
And, and I think Council President George had something he wanted to add, and I know you did too, Borough-
Yeah, just briefly, part of this, part of the striping solution is, we, we have a striping machine that actually can spray two colors fairly sophisticated for that kind of machinery, but it's been under repair. We did finally locate parts locally. That's being repaired. It's not really the time when it's appropriate to paint. We decided that wasn't enough. So, DPW has requested a second one that we're working on with the Borough Administrator. Also, that was part of the area, if I'm not mistaken, that we looked at quite some time ago. In fact, even volunteers were, did some striping. We talked, we painted the sidewalks, because the repair shops there and the, and the vendors in the stores were parking right out to the curb. That's a very, very old section of town. There used to be a motor vehicle agency there that tied everybody up. But the lots are paved right out to the street, so there was no, but they're technically on paper sidewalks. So, that was all striped. I did some of my Sunday morning meditation work, went down and cleared the entire growth that nobody would clear for two years between Brookside all the way up. So, that I notice now when I drive by is that it's walkable and people are using it. But there are, you know, part of the decision that we made when we, I think it's, I think it's Lexington we made one way, I mixed up on the streets, to try and eliminate some of the problems there. And the intent was to go back and revisit that in a year or two to see how it's been operating. So, I'll turn it over to Terry.
I just felt I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that what we have underway, which Councilwoman Wolkovich has been talking about, is we've been working with consultants on our bicycle and pedestrian master plan. That'll be, you know, adopted this year. They're, the consultants are kind of taking in all the feedback they got through a lot of different outreach events and their own expertise. And I can, I, I've had conversations with them, and I know there's something in the plan to look at Washington, and I couldn't tell you what specifically. But they know that's a, a critical area, as is Upper Raritan. So, that's something. And in addition, wherever Mrs. Bicard is, the other, the matters of speeding on Magnolia and Benner, that's totally on their radar, based on all the feedback they got from the residents. So, as that, you'll be hearing more from that in the coming years, and that'll be rolling out, you know, kind of preliminarily in probably the spring. So, so we'll have in our master plan some, some goals of addressing that, and hopefully some good mechanisms for addressing those issues outlined in that plan. So, that's, that's an important piece that's been underway.
Thank you. Yes, please, Ann Sheryl.
Hi, I'm Ann Sheryl White, 56 North Sixth Avenue in Highland Park. If the appropriate people could add to the list of things to be looked at in town. The corner of Abbott and North Sixth, that area of road was repaved about a year ago because of utility work that was done. And if I'm not mistaken, the repaving was done by public service. But it was repaved differently than had been. And now, last winter and already this winter, ice builds up at that intersection, and tremendous, tremendous amount of ice, which impacts people walking to and from the high school, and it impacts drivers coming through that intersection. And I know that either DPW or the police have been putting up cones on a regular basis. But it's a big issue that the water can no longer drain towards the storm drains.
So, Borough Administrator?
I, I am aware of that, and I've noticed it. I think the cause of the water is, one of these troubles we have is, are some pumps pumping out to the curb? No?
There is one pump that pre-existed that.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I've, I've noticed it. I've taken a note, and so I will follow up with the Public Works on it.
When they repaved it, the paving was done on Abbott, and they did what usually happens so that the middle of the street is higher than the sides, and the water runs off. But the nearest storm drain is all the way down at South Park. So, the, the water is backing up before there's a storm drain.
Yeah, okay. We'll take a look. I'm not sure what the resolution might be.
Okay. Seeing no further public discussion, I'm going to ask for two motions now before we adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for litigation?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
And now may I have a motion to adjourn to the conference meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
This meeting is adjourned.